Tracy at the moment. All other members present? Are there any additions to or deletions from the agenda?
No, sir, there are not.
Okay, thank you. Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes from April 25th, 2019?
No.
No.
We have a motion?
A motion to approve the minutes of April 25th, 2019.
I'll second it.
It's been moved by Dwayne, seconded by Rich, that we approve the minutes from the April 25th, 2019 meeting. Please record your vote. Here we go again.
Yes.
All right, our next item, item number six, is a public hearing on the Jackalope Plan Development Amendment Number One. Rezoning, track it number Z18026. And we will open the public hearing at 7:02 and turn it over to Stacy.
All right, good evening Chairman and Planning Commission members. As just stated, this is the Jackalope Plan Development Amendment Number One, rezoning. So the subject site is located at the southeast corner of Parker Road and Cockrell Drive. The intent of this rezoning is to allow for a larger range of retail and commercial uses, including allowing for a hardware store and garden center. The intent of the original Jackalope Plan Development was to provide a commercial retail facility with permitted uses from retail, office, and restaurant. The proposed PD amendment will expand the uses allowed on the property to include those listed as uses permitted by right within the C Commercial Zone District within the town, as well as add accessory uses, definitions, and development standards which pertain to the proposed neighborhood hardware store and garden center. So in July 7th, 1997, Town Council approved the annexation and zone the property Jackalope Plan Development. At the same time, Town Council also approved the Jackalope Minor Development Plan. On May 22nd, 1997, the Planning Commission approved the Jackalope Site Plan to convert the existing Cockrell stables into an outdoor market and to use existing buildings for retail sales. On April 23rd, 2003, an administrative site plan amendment was approved to revise the landscaping to include a water feature and hardscape. In addition to this rezoning, the applicant has submitted a site plan amendment and replat to build a hardware store and garden center on the property. The site plan amendment and replat will be reviewed administratively and are not a part of tonight's hearing. And on the screen is the original site plan from 1997. The Jackalope Plan Development was created in 1997 and was written to allow for a variety of commercial uses. The property has been used for commercial purposes for the last 22 years. The proposed rezoning will not change the commercial nature of the property, but will expand the commercial uses to be consistent with the town's commercial property vision while allowing for the applicant's desire to construct a hardware store and garden center. The general land use map within the Parker 2035 Master Plan identifies this property as being within the Neighborhood Center character area. The property is represented by a blue rectangle in the center of the map. Neighborhood centers are characterized as retail, office, and service commercial areas designed to serve the needs of the surrounding residents. Based on this analysis, staff has determined that the request for the expansion of the allowed uses on the property allows for greater conformance with the commercial land use under the Neighborhood Center designation and is consistent with recommendations of the Parker 2035 Master Plan. So staff has reviewed the proposal and has determined that the project is consistent with the master plan, provides adequate access to infrastructure, drainage facilities, and design considerations. Utility providers have confirmed capacity and availability. The project satisfies the nine criteria required in the Land Development Ordinance to rezone the property. Referral agency comments have been addressed, and all public notice requirements have been satisfied. Therefore, staff recommends that the Planning Commission recommend Town Council approve the Jackalope Plan Development Amendment Number One, rezoning. This concludes my presentation. I'm available for any questions you may have. And tonight, we do have the applicant present, and he does have a presentation for you.
Questions for Stacy? Okay, would the applicant want to step forward? State your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Marley Hodgson, and I'm the principal of the Big Toolbox and Jackalope Properties, 8080 South Holly Street, Centennial, Colorado. 80123, or 80122, sorry.
Thank you.
I appreciate the opportunity to address the commission. And as Stacy mentioned, we're requesting an amendment to the PD to allow us to build a second location of the Big Toolbox and Highlands Garden Center, the first location of which has been in operation for 40 years. And it's located on Holly just north of county line in Centennial. It's a family-owned business. My family, my father-in-law, and my wife and I own the business. It's Colorado local business. Like I said before, we've been around for a long time. There's five major components to the business, so it's much more than just a hardware store and nursery garden center. We're an ACE Hardware. We have been ACE for 16, 17 years now. And we've been known for a long time for having a lot of great, unique products, ranging from Steel and Festool to Traeger, you name it. A lot of very unique items that our customers appreciate. So, in addition to being a hardware store, a full-service hardware store, we also have a very significant lawn and garden department. We've been known for many years for our expertise in lawn care, plant care, and general outdoor care. So we also have a nursery and garden center, which is called the Highlands Garden Center. We have everything from live goods, ranging from annuals and perennials to trees, shrubs, live pond plants, and fish. We have master gardeners and certified horticulturists on staff all the time, year-round, to advise customers on anything plant-related, whether it be planting, caring for plants, landscape design. We offer landscape design. We also offer landscape installation in terms of planting. We also have a really big bird department. We're one of the biggest birding departments in the region, so we really take pride in that. We have everything from all sorts of unique foods for birds to birdhouses and beekeeping, and you name it. In addition to the nursery, we also have a rental center and repair shop. We're one of the larger small motor repair shops in the region. We are Honda and Steel Gold Certified. We're Toro Master Mechanics, and we work on Briggs and Stratton as well. So we focus on keeping everybody's outdoor power equipment working, whether that be a string trimmer, or a blower, or a lawnmower, snow thrower. We're pretty proud of that. We have mechanics on staff full-time, and we're pretty busy all year round with that. In addition, we have a rental center where we rent everything from hand tools and party supplies to chainsaws to any type of do-it-yourself project, lawn aerators, for example, anything like that. And then lastly, probably one of our most unique operations is we have the Lawn and Sprinkler Center. And we're very proud of that. We're one of the largest in the region. We serve contractors and homeowners alike. And we are specialists in underground sprinkler systems, whether that be design, repair. We carry a ton of merchandise, everything from Rainbird and Hunter to Lasco, and you name it. We have lots of people in at all times of year with trying to stump us on how to fix their problems. And we have actually in our existing location all sorts of sprinkler systems gone wrong. We have our own little museum hanging from the ceiling. People get a kick out of that. Different ways you can ruin it. But, so that's really who we are. We've been known over the years as having wonderful customer service, and we're the place where you go when you want some advice on how to fix something and want to find some unique piece of equipment, or a tool, or an item that you need to fix it. So, we're not a big-box store. We're not a lumberyard. We're not Home Depot or Lowe's. They have their place, and we have ours. And we really specialize in having stuff that the community needs and wants and desires. So that's really who we are. In terms of the specific location, at maturity, which we would believe to be three to five years out, we project 100 to 130 new jobs. That would be both full and part-time, ranging from master gardeners, retail managers, retail sales, mechanics, to part-time. We feel we have a really important duty to the community. We employ a lot of local folks. We have a lot of part-time jobs as well, which are great for semi-retired or retired folks looking to stay busy or wanting to do something. And we also offer a lot of first-time jobs, whether that be high school and college-age kids. And they typically tend to come from the immediate area. So it's a nice blend of jobs that we hope to bring. In regards to the site, we're sensitive to the fact that there's residential on the south and that there's more commercial on the north. We're going to mass the site as such to make sure that we're careful. And that's our intention. We understand that there's commercial activity and residential on the sides. So, that's one thing that we're sensitive to, and the site plan will reflect that. Lastly, one thing that we're proud of at the Big Toolbox is giving back to the community. We understand the community supports us, and a really healthy relationship with that community, we need to give back. So we tend to support all sorts of smaller, local causes, whether they be charities or organizations, as well as some larger ones as well. We're a part of the ACE Co-op, and we have a large partnership with the Children's Miracle Network, and we're always raising money for that as well, besides more local stuff. That's really all I had right now. I had one more thing. We have been doing some outreach to the local community. I have talked to and sent letters to the direct neighbors to our south, one of whom wanted to be here tonight in support, but his granddaughter, and it's Jim Yates is his name, his granddaughter's in a play here locally, so he couldn't make it. He does intend to come to the Town Council meeting in support. So, we are sensitive to that.
Thank you. Questions for the applicant?
I was wondering how many buildings this all takes up?
So it'll actually be one large building that consists of a hardware, the one main building, which has the hardware store, lawn and sprinkler, the shop, and the rental department. And then attached to that will be a large indoor garden center greenhouse, and then there'll be an outside component as well.
So the setup will be very similar to the one you have in the Centennial?
It will, it will. It'll all be on one level.
Yeah.
And I hope to be a lot more efficient than that. And that was 40 years old now, and it's been pieced together a little bit.
Okay.
Further questions? Thank you, sir.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Further questions for Stacy?
Stacy? The only question I have is, originally, they were going to reuse buildings that were already extant on the property. And this is going to remove those buildings, correct?
Correct. So, the current site plan application that we have submitted will be removing the building that's on-site, and that's in order to meet the grading on the property. So right now, the property needs to be, to meet our code in the way of landscaping, parking, grading, drainage, all of it, which is going to require massive grading on the site to make it work, which means the buildings are going to have to go.
Okay, and the buildings, since the buildings were kept originally, was there any particular reason other than it's cheaper to keep old buildings and to build new ones? Was there historical value to those buildings felt at that time?
So reading through the staff report for that 1997 site plan and rezoning, it sounded like they just wanted to use it, and they liked that they were barns for the use that they wanted to do.
Okay, thank you.
And Stacy, I'm assuming that it's going to meet all the design standards?
Yes, so when the site plan, when we review the site plan, it'll have to meet all of the standards, landscaping, parking, and then the commercial design standards in our code.
And what's the timeline on this?
So, the applicant has submitted the replat and the site plan. I don't know what their timeline is for actual construction getting open. We can ask.
Do you have me to comment on that?
No.
Sure.
It's our hope to be open for business next April. So it's a relatively fast development plan. We would like to get started on construction if at all possible by the end of the summer.
Okay. Anything else?
Yes, Stacy, what is the reason that it can't just be rezoned to street commercial versus modifying the PD?
So, the reason we stayed with the Plan Development was to really cater towards the proposed use for the Neighborhood Center and the Garden Center, or the Neighborhood, whatever, Tool Center, the ACE Hardware. And so there's a lot of things that we put in here. So we have setbacks that are actually exceed our code. There's a 50-foot setback from the residential. There's also a 50-foot setback from some of the roads, just to help for the specific use. They also have a lot of, well, not a lot, but they're going to have more outdoor display than your typical business because of the nursery component. And then they do have some bulk materials that are sold on-site as well. So, it's just a little bit different. It wouldn't quite meet the commercial code. So, and the PD just fit it better.
Okay.
Thank you. You're welcome.
Other questions? Okay, as this is a public hearing, we will open the meeting to public comment regarding this item. If you have a comment regarding this particular item, step forward to the podium. State your name and address for the record.
Hi, my name is David Ardell. I'm at 4893 Sonata Place in Parker, 80134. When I first learned this project, I live in Padera, so it's a... When I first learned about this, I was happy to hear that this type of was planned for that location, being a hardware and a garden center. We come into Parker for most of our needs and everything. Some things we have to go into Castle Rock, just from where we're located, strictly from where Padera is. So, happy to hear that this was a project that was planned for there. Like I said, where we're located, I've certainly talked to some of my neighbors, let them know what was planned for there. And I can't speak for them, but they certainly... In Padera, everyone's very serious about their gardening, and we are as well. So been down here for a couple of years or so, looking forward to hopefully having this available to us.
Thanks, sir.
Okay.
Good evening, Ty Aslin, 5228 Craftsman Drive in Padera as well. And so I'll take it a little bit different direction. When I found out about it, so 18 years ago, I lived in Vail. And all I knew, this was well before Lowe's, Home Depot, and all I knew was ACE Hardware up there. And it was friendly and consultative. So you fast-forward 18 years, and I move off of 7600 Kaylee Avenue and very close to Holly Street. That then became where I then bought my Still, which is very hard to find, Weed Eater. So I've had sort of, I've been a longtime customer of the ACE and the Big Toolbox. And then when I heard it was coming this direction, I even took it a different direction of, in a selfish way, I'm a DY-ier, but I'm really, really bad at it, and my wife will attest to it. So what I need is, when I go into the stores, is help. And that's what I've always found with them. And as Marley stated, there's a time and a place for the big-box stores, but there's really a time and a place for people that really need that hometown feel and that help when you walk into a hardware store. And I think if you all haven't been to the store at Holly Street, you'd be very surprised, sort of the resources, the selection, and then the help. As Marley stated, there's always, there's the right staff, on-staff, the right people that know what they're doing. So, I'm passionate about it just because, as a DY-ier who's not very good at what he does, I don't need to be going back and forth 1,000 times, as we've all done on Parker Road. We go back to Lowe's on a Saturday six times for the same screw, because you did it wrong, versus getting the right help. And like I said, I do not, in case there's anyone here from Lowe's or Home Depot, I do not want to downgrade that service, because there is a need for it. But, this is where I believe Parker is striving to go, is not only a Colorado-owned, family-owned company, but it's a sustainable, and it's been proven through 40 years, a business. So what we don't want is the risk of someone coming in, and then in a year, turning that property over. And what we have is track history, and very responsible track history, like Marley talked about, with employees and employment, and giving back to the community. So, I can't think of a better operator, and a better, just because I'm a client, so I know there's a little bit of a conflict of interest there, but I will be shopping there, hands-down, as I'm sure many folks in the Padera will. So, that's all I have.
Thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
Seeing no further comment, we will close the public comment. Do we need any more information from the applicant, or Stacy?
No.
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 All right, we will close the public hearing at 7:21. Planning Commission discussion?
I guess I'd jump in to say, I think this looks like a great new use for that site. Certainly, as service has been described, I don't believe we have at that level within our town. And I do believe, kind of like the last public commenter made, that hometown kind of feel to an ACE Hardware store, and what we like here in Parker is a hometown feel, seems to be a match. So, and I do believe that the site does need some upgrading from just a site presentation standpoint, and it should take care of that. I mean, I love Jackalope and Low Shopping there, hate to lose it, but I think that corridor could look better.
Yeah, I think with the, I call it redevelopment of that area with the Big Toolbox. I love the idea of it. And I've been to the one on Holly many times in the past for different things. And if that's going to be the same as this, it'll be an awesome place. So, I think a great amenity that Parker needs, so I'll be for it.
So I'm guilty of, my GPS is permanent. I like purple tools, don't ask, and I'm looking forward to it. So, it would be a good thing for Parker.
I'm in support of the project. I think it's good that we're going to have some additional commercial south of Hess Road that is something that the neighbors will be able to use well, and that the additional housing that's going to be built will need lots and lots of gardening supplies. And the more we have south of, in the south part of Parker, the less traffic there is on Parker Road, because you don't have to make all those trips up north again. So I am in support of the project.
Yeah, I have nothing to add, except, you know, I appreciate the approach with doing a PD amendment versus just changing the zoning outright to a C. But I'm in support. I think this is great, can be a good project for us.
Yeah, I don't have anything else really to add. After reviewing the staff report, I think it's clear it meets all nine of the rezoning criteria, so I'm in support of it as well.
Well, I too am a very longtime customer of the Big Toolbox, having owned houses on Arapo Road and Holly, and just across the border in Highlands Ranch. And had Sprinkler Systems designed there, and bought my first snow blower there in 1989. I know the business, and I think it's going to be a great asset to the town. And I appreciate the time taken to really do a thoughtful pulling together of this project, and looking forward to see it go up. All right, do we have a motion?
I move the Planning Commission recommend Town Council approve the Jackalope Plan Development Amendment Number One.
I second.
It's been moved by Rich, seconded by Eliana, that we, Planning Commission recommend Town Council approve the Jackalope Plan Development Amendment Number One. Please record your vote.
Do you still want us to do an affirmative vocalization of our support?
No, don't need to do that.
It's just a surprise when it comes to Spain.
Yeah, it's a surprise. Okay.
Thank you, Stacy.
Are we all right?
Are you up again?
Okay. Next, we have a public meeting, a draft ordinance, an ordinance to amend Section 13.04.150 of the Parker Land Development Ordinance concerning the rezoning of areas from all other zoning districts to PD Plan Development. And we will open the public meeting at 7:26.
All right, so I will be doing this one for you guys this evening. So, good evening again. So, the proposed Land Development Ordinance, or LDO, amendment before you tonight will create limitations for when a property can be rezoned to a new Plan Development or PD. So currently, the Land Development Ordinance allows properties to be rezoned to a Plan Development with no limitations or minimum area requirements for the new zone district. The proposed LDO amendment will create minimum property size limits on rezonings of property from straight or Euclidean zoning districts, which is C Commercial or LI Light Industrial, from being rezoned to Plan Development. There are two exceptions. The first exception is if the property is greater than 10 acres. The second exception is if the property is greater than four acres, and the rezoning is being used to clean up the zoning of an area comprised of multiple lots with more than one existing zone district. So this LDO amendment is proposed because the town is currently in the process of modernizing our Land Development Ordinance. One of the desired outcomes of the modernization is to reduce the use of Plan Development Zone districts. This proposed amendment will help to limit the creation of new PDs during the modernization process. So staff recommends, the Planning Commission recommend, Town Council approve the proposed Land Development Ordinance. That concludes my presentation, and I'm available for any questions you may have.
Questions for Stacy?
You don't look like Bryce.
Maybe just more of a curious question. Was it two weeks ago, we rezoned where the preschool is to a PD? So, under this, would that have not been allowed to happen?
Yes, so if this ordinance was in place, that rezoning would not have been allowed.
Okay.
Have you gotten all the other ones taken care of before we do this?
So, anything that's currently in the hopper will be allowed to continue. So what that means is if there's an application already submitted at the time that this is adopted, they're grandfathered in, so they can continue. Right now, we do not have any proposals that would not meet any of the exceptions or the criteria.
The other question I have is that the one where you're just, you know, you would leave it there as an exception for cleaning things up, why is there the 10-acre exception? Why is that an exception?
So, looking at all the zone districts we have, and looking at the straight Euclidean zoning we have out there, we're just looking at the size limitations, and 10 acres seem to be those properties that may need a P, Plan Development, in the future. Or the smaller ones, we don't have a lot of those. We're not going to really be prohibiting people from development.
What will be the criteria for deciding that you need a Plan Development in the future? What kind of criteria would you be looking at? I would have asked these a week ago, but I just found out it was going to be on the dais.
Are you asking for in the future, when we adopt the modernization?
Yeah, in the future, when you're going to have, you know, when you're going to use that 10-acre exception, what are the types of things that you would use that 10-acre exception for?
I believe the 10-acre exception, so one, you'd have to meet the 10 acres. I believe the 10-acre exception, so one, you'd have to meet the 10 acres, and two, the development of the property would have to be outside of something that's permitted within our straight or Euclidean zoning, so something outside of our C commercial or light industrial zone district.
Okay.
Further questions? All right, since this is a public meeting, we will open the meeting to public comment. If you have a comment on this item, please step forward. Seeing no members of the public, we will close the public comment. Do we need further information?
No.
No.
All right, we will close the public meeting at 7:30. Planning Commission discussion?
Perfectly reasonable.
Yeah, I don't see a real problem with going forward with this.
That seems to make sense.
I got nothing.
Got nothing?
I got nothing.
Got nothing?
It seems to work as a good stopgap measure until the complete LDO overhaul is finished, and understanding that it is a, well, the new, one other question, will the new LDO address this in any way? So this is truly a stopgap measure?
Right, so we don't know what it's going to look like yet, but that is one of the preferred outcomes, is that we have something. One, we'll have new zone districts in place that should help limit the use of a plan development, and then we'll have specific regulations in place of when a plan development can be used, so better than what we have today.
Sounds good. Thank you.
All right, do we have a motion?
So I do have one more question. Did you say that there is or there isn't anything in the hopper? I heard you answer, but I don't know what you said.
There is not anything that's been submitted that would not be allowed to continue.
Okay, great. Thank you. Sorry to interrupt.
All right, do we have a motion?
I move Planning Commission recommend Town Council approve an ordinance to amend Section 13.04.150 of the Parker Land Development Ordinance concerning the rezoning areas from all other zone districts to PD planned development.
I second.
It's been moved by Eliana, seconded by Ruth Ann. The Planning Commission recommend Town Council approve an ordinance to amend Section 13.04.150 of the Parker Land Development Ordinance concerning the rezoning of areas from all other zone districts to planned development. Please record your vote. All right. Let's see. Any staff items, Paul?
No, sir.
All right. Then we will adjourn at 7:33. Thank you, all.
Oh, Rosemary has.
Mr. Chair, Rosemary has.
Oh, sorry, so we'll unadjourn? Okay.
We adjourned.
You should have reached, of course, you brought up that June 6 is the start of Parkings, so staff is taking it under advice of the community with the special study session that we will do now on June 6, so we will let you know.
But there is no May 23 meeting still.
Correct.
Just cordoned off the parking lot.
That'd be popular.
But Thursday night is, everything is down there. There's no, nothing else, is there?